Good afternoon. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee's meeting at four o'clock in Eastford Road on April the 11th, 2023. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, roll call. Jim Messier.
Present.
Aaron DeMello.
Present.
Martine Chey, present. Kathy Labiore.
Present.
Wallace McKenzie.
Present.
Spiro Thomo is not here. Andrew Murch is not here. We have a quorum. I had received a request earlier to move the Eastford Road presentation, which is item six, ahead of item five, which is Citizens Forum. Do I have a motion to make that move?
Motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay. Are you ready?
I am ready.
This is going to be the presentation of Eastford Road, my favorite school because we have our little people, the good start. And I volunteered in this library, and we're in the library, and I'm looking at all these books, and once again, I want all the books.
Well, first I want to welcome you all to -- first I want to welcome you all to Eastford Road School. We're thrilled that you're here, and we love talking about our school, so hopefully you'll enjoy our presentation as much as we enjoyed putting it together. So I wanted to kind of introduce myself first. I'm Kelly Gileno. This is my 26th year of -- 26th year in education. I've been a classroom teacher, a reading language arts consultant, an assistant principal, and now a principal. And I'll be celebrating my one-year anniversary here on May 2nd. Hopefully you saw our beautiful vending machine on your way in. It's one of our absolute favorite things about our school. When I received the job in Southbridge, I came in with two initiatives. And so those initiatives were joy and urgency. The first one is joy because as a pre-K to one school, we're the foundation of all learning -- sorry. We're the foundation of all learning in Southbridge, so we really need to start our students off in the right way. This is a job I take very seriously, and we want our school to be filled with joyful experiences, which you'll see later on in the presentation. This is also the school where students get their first memories about being a student in Southbridge. And one of the things that we've done this year is make sure that all students feel welcomed every single day. So students are greeted when they get off the bus. We have staff members at the bus, we have staff members at the door, we have staff members getting students out of their cars, staff members at those doors, staff greeting them as they pick up their breakfast and in their classrooms. So students come in, and it's -- for people who've been here, it's kind of like a hug fest here. Everyone's like, hi, 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 welcome. And students really have embraced that, and it's really helped our classroom culture. My other goal was urgency. And you can see up here some of the key points for our urgency goal. Our students need to be taught foundational reading and math skills because as the foundation for the rest of Southbridge Public Schools, if our students leave here behind, it's going to be very difficult for them to catch up. One of my other goals was to improve climate and culture in the building, and also increase parent and community involvement, and you'll see some slides about that later, and also student attendance. We can't teach our students if they're not here, so we really have worked on getting our students in school, working with their families here as much as possible. And we're about 91.2% attendance for the year at this point. We're a little upset because we just tied with Southbridge Middle School, and we're hoping to beat them. So, Eastford Road School, who are we? Well, we have about 360 students. We're up about 25 students from the beginning of the school year, and that's quite a few because we have students coming in and out all year long, but we're still up about 25. We have four half-day sessions of pre-K. We have two sessions of a half-day pass pre-K, which is our substantially separate pre-K program for students with autism or special needs. We have seven kindergarten classrooms, of which two of them are dual. We have eight first-grade classrooms, of which two are dual. We have one pass K in one class, and we also have a connect class for K in one, which is a new program that we've started here for students who struggle coming into school. A lot of social-emotional learning occurs in that classroom, and it's been very successful for our students up to this point. Here's just some pictures of our kids. As I told you, we do have the cutest kids possible here at our school, and we do a lot of different activities with them. We do have a wonderful staff here at Eastford Road School. I feel very lucky to have so many committed and dedicated professionals working with our kids. Every staff member here loves our kids. You can tell that when they walk in, they're just as happy to see the kids as the kids are to see them. That's a list of our staff, and you can see we have a lot of adults working here to support That is one teacher who dressed as Chica Chica Boom Boom and has the letters all over her. A couple of things that I wanted to talk to you about were our reading instruction here. So just like Charlton Street and West Street, we do use Wonders as our reading curriculum. We do have something new that was brought in this year called Ekri, and that is part of the Wonders program, but it's really works at getting the students engaged with the foundational literacy skills. So it's about 25 minutes each day. Our students, our teachers have been trained in it, and we're already seeing great results. It has different parts of decoding, phonemic awareness, phonological awareness. It's actually a very good program, and I do think it's going to help move our students in the right direction. This year, we added three reading teachers, and we do have a reading coach, so now we do have a reading team. They look at student data constantly and are always working to see how we can move our students to be, become better readers. We have small group reading intervention to all students who need extra support. We do have a partnership with Hill for Literacy, which the other schools do as well. Our teachers have had PD time in the Science of Reading, so this is the second year of Science of Reading, so we have a Science of Reading for our brand-new teachers, and we have Science of Reading Digging Deeper, we call it, for our teachers who have already been through the program. And it really has been a wonderful PD opportunity. We also have some of our EAs who opt into the program to get some extra support. We definitely are seeing increases in our students' literary skills in K in one, and from what we've been looking at data-wise, our kindergarten scores are doing much, much better, almost back to like pre-pandemic level. So we have seen some nice growth there. And here's just some pictures of our students. Here's some students in preschool, working with letters and sounds. This is a kindergarten. We do have daily journal time, and we've really been working on increasing our writing in our classrooms. So you can see students wrote in their journals using the sentence stem, "The weather today is." When they started the school year, there was lots of pictures and a couple letters, sometimes ones that didn't even look like letters, and as the year has gone on, it's been a nice portfolio to see the students' work throughout the year. Here's Independent ELA Center, Sentence Writing, and you can see they're using their student journals. That is a kindergarten student up in the corner who's doing some reading up there. First grade, here's another response to literature. One of our first-grade teachers, Ms. Sherry Extra, did a beautiful unit about Martin Luther King and had the students do some writing with it, and also some illustrations. Here's some first-grade work samples of research and inquiry, which is built into our Wonders program. So we're trying to get the kids not just to be doing decoding or writing in their journals, we want them to actually do, be doing some research and following up on things that are interesting to them, so you can see some projects up there. For our math instruction, we have Ready Math. We also use iReady, which is our kind of computer-based program for students to be practicing their math skills. We have partnerships with Looney Math and Curriculum Associates, who are the people who made Ready Math, and so they do come in and give our teachers some tips on how to do a better job with teaching it and how to kind of deepen their math knowledge, so that way they're able to kind of respond on the spot to students. I love this picture. The student is doing accounting collection, and we are working really hard to do some hands-on math experiences and making sure that all of our students have manipulatives to use. Here's some different math work samples for you to check out. If I'm going too fast, just tell me. Here's some first-grade work samples. You can see the manipulatives, you can see students working together. Something else that we have here at ERS is, we are a PBIS school, just like the rest of the schools in the district. Our three kind of rules for the school are to be responsible, respectful, and safe. Our teachers do work really hard to give positive specific, positive behavior-specific praise to our students, and when they're doing that, they pair that with Cub Cash, which is the little green money that you'll see there. And students get to go every week to our school store, which you saw when you were walking in. We try to make it as exciting as possible, and we do have money that we've used to ask the students what they like for prizes. Their favorite things now are the sticky hands that you kind of like throw, and they stick to things. That is one of our biggest sellers. At the beginning, I talked about attendance and trying to raise attendance. So when we kind of take a walk out, you'll see we have an Attendance Matters bulletin board where we track attendance for preschool, kindergarten, and grade one. That's changed every week. We do have an attendance team. We have a family liaison who keeps up on attendance and calling families and checking in with families. Our teachers also check in if a student's been absent more than a day or two to find out how the student's doing. We do give prizes. You can see those little dog tags. That was something that was done here a while ago, and one of the teachers wanted to bring back, and we had a grant, so we were able to bring it back. So each month has a different color, I guess I can use the pointer, has a different color, and it says, "Eastford, Eastford Road School, perfect attendance for that month." And so the students get those, and they put them on their backpacks, and we have about at least 100 to 120 every month who get that. We've also decided to do weekly attendance because it is hard to have perfect attendance. We don't wait for the end of the year. We do monthly, but we also do weekly. And so we did pencils, and then we also brought the sticky hands there because that was very enticing. So each student, if they're able to attend school every single day of the week, they do get a little prize as well. And one other thing, we do have the Kinvolv, which is a texting, texting app, I guess, that allows me to text the families in town, the families that go to our school, and it automatically translates to their home language. So I do send out attendance updates and different information. That has been a game changer, like, that's amazing. Parents love getting the text. Sometimes they text me back, "Thank you," you know, but it really has helped our parent engagement. Families know quickly what's going on. And so just, I would say probably every other week or so, I send out our attendance info on Friday, so families know. So here's just some pictures of our students with their little dog tags that they earn, and we do get a big, nice group picture. And then in the corner is a student getting one of the weekly awards. We do have two different programs for out-of-school time programming. This is a huge support for our families. We have a before-school program that starts at 7:00 in the morning, and that is funded by a grant from the United Way. So it goes from 7:00 to 8:10. Students come in, we have five teachers and about 40 students, and they come in and do some different activities with them. It's a nice start to the student's day, and then at 8:10, they go pick up their breakfast and go to class. This has also been helpful for families that have struggled to get here on time. Will say, well, we have a Smart Start program, you can drop them off, and then they're ready to go. Students love it. They've been doing yoga recently. We've been doing a lot of mindfulness activities, and so it is a nice start for their day. This year, we were able to get the 21st Century After School Programming Grant, so that runs from 3:00 to 5:00 each day. So again, for working families, it's very nice. That has transportation provided, and I believe we're going to take a walk by the program today. We have about 40 students in that program as well. And we are actually going to, I think it's not, not on another slide, we will have the 21st Century Program Grant for summer school as well. So we will have, I think it's a five- or six-week program, Monday through Thursday, and we'll have about 45 students and five teachers doing different activities during the summer with our students. One of the things that we tried to start this school year was some school day programs, bringing different events into the school. Not only does it engage our kids, our kids love it, our staff loves it, but it's just awesome opportunities that our students might not be going to or seeing, so we bring them into the school. So I've got pictures of them all. This was used with different grant funds and PBIS funds. So we had Crocodile River Music, which has been to a lot of the area schools, and they come into the school and they teach our students African drumming, music, dancing, and they're here for two days, and then they do a big, kind of whole-school show of our learning to culminate what we did, and so that we had that in September. They also brought African art to the school and left it here for a month's installation. We had Johnny the K., who I think is pretty well-known in Southbridge. He is a nationally acclaimed presenter. He's a musician and a teacher, and he comes to talk to the students about growth mindset and positive, positive self-talk, but also kind of some social-emotional learning, and he puts it all in different songs, and he has different hats. The kids loved his hats and the different costume changes that he did. In February, we had Cosmic Kelly. So she is a scientist who comes to your school. We had three different shows with Cosmic Kelly, so we could have smaller groups and more hands-on opportunities for the students. But you can see the students were getting to touch that, I believe that was, what do you call that ice, that -- dry ice. It was creating bubbles and just a lot of opportunities for our kids. She called up a lot of our kids to do science with her, and then they all got to walk through and get to play with stuff. We had Riverside Reptiles come in March. They brought a program called Jeepers Creepers, and it had a lot of different -- that's how some of our teachers felt. The kids loved it. We were all a little nervous, but they brought all different types of animals, and the kids got to pet the different animals, and it was all creepy-crawly animals, and they learned different facts, where they were from, and that was alligator, so the students got to touch the tail. As well as trying to bring in some outside presenters, we just have some normal in-school joyful celebrations that we work on. So we have monthly school-wide assemblies. We have shining stars breakfasts, and so those are the students that teachers recommend. They recommend two students per class each month who have been responsible, respectful, and safe, and we have a special breakfast for them, and they get certificates to go home. We had the Hispanic Heritage Day Parade, which was amazing. I'll actually go to that, so you can actually see some of the pictures. So here's our shining stars. This was the Hispanic Heritage Day Parade, so this was the second year that our school did this. Our family liaison and a couple other staff members brought it to our attention. It was amazing. The students dressed up or made costumes, and they just paraded around the school two times, but we had hundreds of family members all out front taking pictures. We had different music playing. It was like a big party. The students absolutely loved it, and I, when we came out of the school, we were leading the students out. The entire front yard and all down the road were packed with people. So it was just hundreds of people who came to it. This was our first annual turkey trot. Again, it was brought up by staff that there's a turkey race that's done in Puerto Rico, where people would race against each other and win a turkey, so we didn't want our students racing and trying to win a turkey, but we thought it would be fun to do some type of kind of walk-around celebration. So we had a balloon arch finish line for them to go through, and you can see our teachers really got into it with their costumes. We did not invite families because we really weren't sure what it was going to look like. We will invite families next year. We have spirit days. Part of what we've done this year is have some shared leadership, and we have different staff-run committees. So one of our committees is School Spirit Committee. So they meet once a month, and they come up with different spirit days and spirit weeks. And these days, today was Twin Day. These days have been really helpful in getting our students excited, but also we have much better attendance on spirit days. In the corner was Valentine's Day. So our PE teacher wanted to decorate the cafeteria so the students could have a lovely lunch on Valentine's Day. Something else that we've tried to do this year is reach out to our community partners. So you'll see some pictures here. We've had Cornerstone Bank reach out to us, and they wanted to do some programs about financial literacy. So they came in and did a first-grade program and a kindergarten program, where they came in, did an activity, talked about, they read two different stories. One was on St. Patrick's Day, one was last Monday. One of them was a Max and Ruby one about money. So it was perfectly right on the kids' level. They really enjoyed it, and also it was nice for Cornerstone to come in and see us. The first time they came, they brought two adults. The second time they came, they brought eight adults. So that was kind of interesting. They saw the need. We've had Community Reading Day, and that's where we invite community members into the school to read and talk about their positions in town. The fire department has been here to do a bit about fire prevention. Our students went and sang at the Center of Hope and Southbridge Rehabilitation this winter. And then our family liaison and our City Connects Coordinator have done an amazing job trying to do some outreach for like Thanksgiving baskets, Christmas toys, backpacks, and different things for families. One of the other committees that we have is Family Engagement. So this group works together and comes up with different activities each month for families to come to. We have, I think, a very good turnout. We've got each month about 18 to 20 staff members who donate their time to stay here till 7:00 at night to run different activities for our families, and we're anywhere from like 100 to about a 150 family, or people come, not 150 families, but for a school of 360 kids, that's pretty good. And we found that as the weather gets nicer, we get more people here. So we've just had a couple of different things. One of our favorite purchases through a grant was we bought a snow cone machine and a popcorn machine, so we have that on hand for a lot of our events. And parent-teacher conferences, our staff worked really hard to try and get, our goal was 100% participation from families. We're at about 80%, so we're getting closer. Here's just some pictures. For our first family night, we bought, it was a snow cone social in lieu of like an open house. We do our open house before the school year starts, so that way families can come in and see where their child's going to be in school, and I think it helps with anxiety, like students know where they're going to be going. But we did get one of those huge, it's kind of like an obstacle course with a slide, and our staff had just as much fun going on it. And that's it. Thank you for checking out our pictures. We love our school here, and I hope you enjoyed the presentation. Does anyone have any questions about Eastford Road? Sure.
Early on your presentation, you had a slide, and it mentioned the letters PD in capital. I didn't know what PD meant.
Oh, professional development. I'm sorry about that.
There we go.
Yep, professional development, and we have that every Wednesday afternoon.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is a question for you or if it's a question for Dr. Malak. You said the reading program that you use is Wonder?
Wonders.
Wonders. I'm just wondering, obviously there's --
You're wondering about wonders.
You got me. Obviously, there's tons of programs out there. One that I'm familiar with is Wilson.
Yes.
So I'm wondering why you guys chose to go with Wonders versus Wilson.
So that decision was made quite a few years ago now, but the idea was to look for a comprehensive literacy program that was aligned with state standards, and identified to be sufficiently rigorous so that we'd make sure kids were being prepared. It really gives teachers almost too much information, like most of these series do, and we also worked with a group called Hill for Literacy that kind of helped us go through the identification process and then begin to train teachers in the implementation of it. You know, it's a core program, so other publishers produce something that you could swap in and swap out. You still have to do the basic literacy instruction, and you know, there's a lot of PD, professional development. Teachers need to be strong teachers of literacy, but it's a tool. But it's a pretty good tool. I mean, it's well-rated both nationally and at the state level.
Is there like a, is there like a practicum for that, or is that just totally? Because I know Wilson has a practicum to get certified as a Wilson teacher and things like that.
So Wilson is a more specific approach generally used for students who are struggling in reading, where Wonders is a core reading program. So there are other, again, we actually have a Wilson-trained teacher in our district. She tends to work with our special education students, but maybe not entirely, but many of them, and it's an intervention. There's also, she mentioned Ekri, that's Enhanced Core Reading Instruction. That's another program that was developed, University of Oregon, that's specific for the Wonders program, and it kind of pulls the most important instructional aspects of it and helps teachers develop a routine, instructional routine that can help kids learn those skills quickly. A lot of research around the strength of that, but there are other programs, like Orton Gillingham is another reading intervention program that teachers can be trained in. What we've done for our teachers is work with Hill for Literacy, and they take an actual college course, it's called the Science of Reading, and it helps them learn what the current best practice and knowledge is around reading instruction. Our theory is our teachers need to understand that because there's 100 decisions made every instructional unit, and if they, you know, have an opportunity to make a good one independently, the more they know about reading instruction, the better off we all are. But it's a very heavy lift, to be honest.
Sure. This is another one of those questions, like Wally over here. There was, in the beginning of the presentation, you were talking about first grade and some of them being dual?
Yep, so dual language. It's a, two of our classes, and they speak Spanish half of the day and English the other half of the day. So they switch during the day and receive language and literacy in both, and numeracy in both languages.
Fantastic. Awesome. Awesome. So I have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, first of all, that you have a lot of fun things going on at your school.
Thank you.
I think I want to go back to preschool and kindergarten here. But I was also wondering, I know that our town has been really concerned this last week or so about school safety in general, which I know applies more to the older students than probably it does here. But even so, just wondering what kind of safety procedures you have in place? Are the teachers all really familiar with those? And what type of drills you have on a regular basis to make sure you're prepared in case of an unforeseen event?
Yeah, good question. We do have lockdown drills and fire drills. And so we just had a lockdown drill on Monday morning. We do have a crisis manual for our school and in the district. So our staff is taught about it and we do review it throughout the year so that people feel safe about it. We did very well with the lockdown drill. Our teachers, you know, knew we were going to have a drill at some point and so they were really well-prepared. They'd all talked to their students. And especially in a school with young students, we don't want to be traumatizing, but we also want to be prepared. So a lot of them had things prepared where they would go. And in the lockdown drill, they, you know, go to a quiet area of the room where they can't be seen. So they were prepared and had things ready for the kids to do. So, and we've gotten very good at fire drills as well. We had a couple of fire drills in the winter as well. And we can get out of the building in about two minutes, which is pretty impressive.
If there are no other questions, I just want to take an opportunity to thank Ms. Gilino for her leadership here at ERS. It's been a really great, productive year since she came on board. Early on, we talked about the climate and culture of this school and I really think she's, within a year, implanted a real strong roots of positivity. Early learning should be fun and, you know, the slides, the pictures, there's kind of proof of all the fun that they're bringing on here. And I think attendance, in a way, is how kids are voting, too. They're more and more coming to school. A long way to go on that, but certainly she's doing a great job and so I'm really glad she's on the team. The other part of my announcements, and you touched on it a little bit, is obviously we're all shocked and afraid when we learn about a gun coming into one of our schools. You know, that's a heavy topic. I know the police chief spoke to it last night at the town council meeting. He and I also spoke with the high school staff for two and a half hours last week about the incident. And our, I want families to know, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow at the high school at four o'clock. Where the chief, myself and high school leadership will be present to talk about the issue and answer people's questions. At the end of the day, it's just really terrifying for everybody. I do want to thank the police for their continued vigilance and effort. They found out about this at eleven-fifty and before noon, the situation was, as they call it, neutralized. I am looking into situation at the high school, though, because of conversation with staff. It's like, what led then to staff after the event has been kind of resolved? What things happened that led staff first to feel unsafe, which then leads students to feel unsafe, which leads families to feel unsafe? Sure, there's the shock of the event, but there's other things we have to look into. All schools have safety plans. Safety plans are reviewed by the chief of police at the beginning, end of August before school. That's an annual event. All schools train staff on that. You know, we work with police and fire in our drills. It's scary because we are considered soft targets. And so what can we do to address it? And how do you make people feel better after this happens? And that's a really big question we're grappling with because we feel violated. I will say, our investment in social-emotional, psychological and social services for kids, therapy, psychotherapy for kids, our partnership with the police department in those services we offer kids are all part of a fabric that together protect kids. And while it's scary, the fabric worked. Somebody was nervous by a social media post and they alerted the police and the police took action immediately. And because of all of that, it worked. The outcomes of the what-if games are horrifying. So we have a lot of work to do. Again, the chief and the Southbridge Police Department are top shelf. I'm so appreciative of their work. We are going to talk to families again tomorrow and we'll continue to work with the staffs of all of our schools to work, again, to make people feel as safe as they can feel in every school. We are living in a tough world and there are events that happen every day that make us feel quite unsettled. So there's, you know, no words that can take these things away from people. It's just the reality. So again, I encourage people, tomorrow afternoon, we'll be there, we'll answer questions on that. And I definitely don't want to hijack your agenda, but wanted to make sure I mentioned that. So thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
That was an amazing pres, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm way over here. Out of sight and out of mind.
I don't know, my cataract lenses are supposed to work that.
Well, we'll try to get you new peripheral ones. The, I almost forgot what I was going to say. Oh, yeah, I, I have not looked into, but considered all the information that has been posted around about this gun issue. And I am extremely satisfied that our police department and our school system and all those involved principals and Dr. Valar, I believe that everybody did exactly what they should have done. I have no questions, no negative thinking. And I think at this point, the continuation of causing people to understand through meetings at school and through talking to the students on a large scale, I think it's exactly what needs to be done as a continuation to make everyone feel safe. So I, actually, I applaud the way it was handled.
Well, since we seem to have moved on to this topic, I do want to take one more minute to really applaud Eastford Road and the way they're working with their kids. I love seeing the pictures on Facebook. I know I say that every time, but I do, I love, I love opening up my computer and seeing pictures of happy kids, especially who've won some kind of award, especially for attendance. That is so important. I won't tell you the story of my almost making perfect attendance. We'll switch now to Citizens Forum, allowing citizens, if they have anything that they would like to comment on either today's, today's performance, today's procedures and, or the, or the issue of guns. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to say? Okay, hearing none. Committee members have anything they'd like to add? I would like to add something. I went to the meeting last night. I thought the chief was very forthcoming. One thing that really struck me was one young man from the high school who talked about how he felt unsafe. I'm not a weeper, but he got me this close to crying. I think we need to remember that our students, our teachers and the rest of our staff, the way things are going in our world with guns, with shootings just all over the place, but especially in schools, the teachers are used to dealing with our students, that sometimes they act up, sometimes they're bad, sometimes we do have to call the police. But they're our students and we know about them. When you add a gun, things go, get out of hand in our hearts and our minds, not necessarily in our procedures, but in our hearts and our minds. And listening to this young man yesterday just really brought it home to me, where, that we did not call a shelter in place or a lockdown. I think in hindsight, it's always good to do things in hindsight. I'm perfect with the 2020 vision. We need to go back and look at all of our procedures. We need to look at our policies and procedures that are written and the ones that are spoken and the ones that are unspoken. So that the next time something like this happens, people don't have to think about what they should do, don't have to guess if they did it right and don't have the community coming back and saying, "Why did you do this?" We need to have written documentation that when this happens, we do this, this and this. When we have a flood in the building, we do this, this and this. All of our emergency procedures, regardless of how small or how major they are, we need to just sit down perhaps this summer and go through all of them so that we can come back in September and say, this, all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our students know exactly what will happen if the fire drill goes off in the middle of lunch. The one thing a teacher does not want to have happen. So everything needs to be looked at again. Our next meeting date is May ninth. Again, that's going to be a four o'clock meeting. This time, it will be at the high school. It will be at the high school and our academy. So we'll, we were going to go right from our littlest students to our oldest students. And I hope that you'll all be there and that you'll all watch us on television. Any other comments from anyone before we adjourn? Oh, yes. I was just very impressed with your presentation today and I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Adjourn the meeting at four forty-four. Couldn't be better. Have a great weekend, guys. Weekend? Good weekend.
Bye, everyone.